So the first question to be answered by David. In 2017, the then-city council adopted a specific plan for the Avenue of Flags. The guidelines state that it must be economically vibrant, community-oriented, and pedestrian-friendly. Question: Are you supportive of the downtown-specific plan guidelines? If so, as a council member, what will you do to move the project forward? If not, one...
Thank you, David. Thank you, everyone, for coming up and listening. Hope that you learned a little bit more about each of us. If you wouldn't mind rereading it, I've read it before. Okay, thank you. The downtown-specific...
What did you have to read?
I've got it. Judith W. Scherz, thank you. The specific plan. You know, the specific plan is exactly that. And we've built businesses and homes. We had specific plans also, but when the finished project was never what we started out with. It usually has to do with making ends meet and meeting all of the regulations that have come up. I have no problem with a specific plan. You have to start somewhere. But we still don't have an investment. And that's been my contention all along. Until someone's willing to come in and build what we could ask them to build, or at least negotiate, I think we're got the cart in front of the horse. So I'm not in favor of a specific plan. Yes, I don't know what the specific plan is. Just because the community said that project should go there doesn't mean it has a chance of success. So I would withhold my judgment until we have a committed investment before I can move forward with the specific plan.
Could you all hold the mic closer to you now?
Okay.
The guidelines I agree with. Economically vibrant, community-oriented, and pedestrian safety. We should have those in every development that we have, not just the Avenue of Flags specific plan. The problem with the specific plan on the avenue is the avenue really consists of many, many little tiny lots owned by different people. So how that's going to be developed really depends on how the city can help organize the landowners and the property owners. Because without the property owners buying into a specific plan on what the city does define, it's not going to go anywhere. And so we need to involve the property owners on the avenue and get them organized and excited about developing the avenue. I've lived here since Dirt, and the avenue hasn't changed in 50 years. I mean, it's changed a little bit. We have, you know, vintage block and a couple new developments. But if we can't get the landowners working with the city and working together with the Chamber of Commerce, the city, and, as Ed says, outside investors, any specific plan's not going to work. And we need to develop an economic development task force and build one. We have one, but it's very limited in scope. It's only two council members and two members from the chamber, as well as some city staff. We need to organize that and expand it so that we're all on the same page. The hotels, the restaurants, the tourists, the community people such as yourself, all working together to have an economic development plan, not only for the avenue, but for all people. So the specific plan can't solve these problems by itself. I wish it could, but it can't. Can you hold that up? Does that lose that signal?
Oh, that's 30 seconds.
30 seconds.
Well, we're moving forward with this. I mean, we... I sat here 10 years ago in 2008 when we were talking about visioning and avenues, et cetera, et cetera. It's been a long process. We have a couple of people that are moving forward. Cameron Mary is got a property that was a gas station on Second Street. He's going forward with the project here. Now, the good thing that the council did this is when we adopted this, is we made a specific designing plan for the avenue so it's not going to be a bunch of hodgepodge buildings that we throw up and one doesn't look like the next. So if we want an art deco theme, that art deco theme is going to be predominant on the avenue. There are some buildings, obviously, that can't just turn on a limb. There's another red banner, a piece of property on Second Street and Avenue of Flags, which is south of that first piece of property. So these things are moving forward. What can we do for people on the Avenue of Flags? You know, as a city, as city officials, what we can do is we can incentivize things for these owners and we can repurpose some of these properties, obviously, without displacing people out of those properties that are currently there. So if we can do some incentivizing, make some tax breaks where the case is, we can possibly get the current property owners to upgrade their buildings and bring them into what we have visioned over the last 10 years for the Avenue of Flags. So things are moving forward. We're just going to see where that goes, but we're going to try to get business owners to come in and also ones that are there to repurpose their buildings and bring them to a modern, more aesthetic, pleasing building.
Thank you, David. I'm in favor of the specific plan. I have lived here for 30 years in New Haven, and I've seen it grow. But you have to have a reason to come downtown, and you need to come down. You have to have a reason for people to come. And if you keep building on certain projects, like the common market or the factory that'll come in, people will see it because these are the goal, which is going to put a lot of money into a project. And that can have people who are on Avenue of Flags to upgrade their buildings. You have to have everybody in line. It's not going to be... You can't mandate it. You can't force an owner of a property to say, "I want you to do this for us." You just can't. It's a private property, and I'm a pro in doing that. But you have many reasons for visitors or tourists to come in that spend more time here, whether it's two or three days. And then they're looking to go to some place like Allen's or Mother Martha's for breakfast the next day. You have to go to people who are established here. Then they're going to look for something else. So you have to have a reason for people to come into your town. Our chamber's done a great job of getting people to come in here and to support us. And we need to have that communicate through. Like Dave said, we came up with a good plan on council. I've only been on the council for a year now, but I've been through the projects, the planning commission and the vision process. It's still the same. Whether you're here, Santa Barbara, Santa Monica, you have to have a reason for people to come down town. And that's the goal. You have to have clean cities, streets clean, the building properly maintained, and your people, your locals, becomes a fortune. Thank you.
All right. Well, the Avenue of Flags is a topic that I'm here to discuss wherever I go, from birthday parties to bar, football games, wherever. And it's a discussion with the business owners that's ongoing. And I feel like the improvements that have been made with Avenue Flags, like the Walkway, the memorial to Aaron Allen are so wonderful. However, as they all said, we need improvement is still to be made. And I think working with the Built and Planning Commission to further their plan is a must. There is no fix-to-fix, like they were all saying. And we have an ongoing project for the city. I feel like the Avenue of Flags needs to be someplace that built residents take pride in.
In general, I support the specific plan for Avenue of Flags. And the question was, as a city council member, what will you do? How will you help the plan, support the plan, promote the plan? And as a city council member, there's only so much you can do to force a plan into action, like all these fine people have said. So as a city council member, what you can do is support and encourage things to be brought for the council. You can, like they said, incentivize the business owners to come out, incentivize upgrades, and find ways that draw people and draw the buy-in into the plan. Without the buy-in into the plan, and everybody in your community, and not just the property owners, but the property owners need to hear, the community is excited about it. There's no reason for them to put money into their buildings if everything's fine and nobody's excited about coming to the building for any other reason. So if you get the community as a whole to buy into the plan and not just focus on the property owners, the property owners have more of an incentive because they see the community excited. And then to them, that equals profit and a reason for participating and buying into the plan. So as a city council member, our job should be to support and encourage citizens and business members alike to buy into this plan, whether it's through incentives or, you know, awesome recreational programs. Give them a reason to be there and give everybody a reason to be excited, not just the business owners.
I read through the specific plan. I'll admit, a lot of work went into it and I know that a lot of people that I know are working hard on it.
Speak up.
Sorry. I'd just like to say we're not going to know exactly what's going to happen until somebody shows up and has, you know, with an offer or something that will be attractive for us to review. And we'll almost be like, we'll have to all agree on it. Somebody's going to come in with something big and we're going to have to like it or not. And it's their money. They're going to be the one that kind of wants to push something. And I like all the tourist stuff coming in. We had a nice event last weekend. The Patriotic theme was really a big deal. And it was attractive to everybody and more kind of thing like that in the events downtown where we can get some foot traffic. And we used to have the farmer's market, and everybody showed up. And they came from all over the valley to come to the farmer's market. We had car shows. They came from all over. They came from all over the county to see the car shows. And we should promote, I think, more things downtown to make people want to come here and also to give them exposure to want to be part of Buildon. And I'm willing to decide as citizens when, you know, when somebody comes up and has something to store some kind, can we help with our thing?
Okay. Question two will be answered first by Judith Dale. A long-ways pass for traffic on 101, 246. Buington is a transient building boom. Question: How do you propose improving traffic flow through these corridors in the short and long term? Please include large truck traffic and parking in your response.
Well, the first thing is divide intervention in traffic control. But 101, I think we need to leave alone. Obviously, Caltrans is in charge of both 101 and 246. And having two state highways can be either a blessing or a curse. And Buington, we need to make it a blessing. And what to do about the traffic on 246? First of all, I would suggest we put a stoplight at Gallow Canyon Road because that would break the traffic up coming from Salt Lake and give some breaks so that people in the shopping area can get in and out. We need, obviously, to lighten the entrance of the current road. That's already kind of in the works and being done. As far as trucks are concerned, I really think we ought to annex the old Bassie Dairy, which is right there by the Santa Rosa Road exit where that overpass is there, and maybe a truck stop or a visitor's stop. I know in other states, there's really great visitor stops. There's a restaurant, there's a service station, there's truck parking. We could solve the overnight truck problem by having a place for them to go. And Santa Rosa Road, on-ramp and off-ramp is already there. And we can run shuttles back and forth. There's just so many things we can do to help these truckers because we don't want to lose the trucker business. And they do like to stay overnight in Buington. We need to make that a positive thing. And so traffic is going to be with us. There's all kinds of ways we can look at no left turns, that sort of thing. I'm not a traffic engineer, but we can, we're working together. We can solve this. And it's really not as horrible. It's horrible from about 4:30 to 6:00. Otherwise, it's actually pretty good. But I think putting the stoplight at Gallow Canyon Road could really solve many, many of our problems on 246. Thank you.
Well, as all of us know, we have had a piece of traffic here in the valley, you know, because of the increase in population, casino, traffic has gotten worse and worse on 246. So there are some things that you can do to mitigate this. There, in the past, there has been a talk about a bypass road that comes off of Santa Rosa and goes on the backside of the river all the way through Salt Lake. So if you don't want to drive through Buington, Salt Lake, then you just drive a bypass road. That's something that will have to be worked at and looked at by the county because that's a county property, obviously. But that's something that's a city council that we can do to try to get something done there. As far as the traffic in town, in-town traffic, I believe that we're going to have to give the Caltrans and start looking at the timing of our traffic lights. Because with the increase of traffic going through town, those traffic lights have to be set up to where they are synced to where you don't get stuck at one, stuck at the next, stuck at the next. You need to have a flow through town. So that's something that if I'm back and see the council, we're going to take a look at and see if we can give the Caltrans that. There are things about traffic in the neighborhoods. We have law enforcement officers, and we can specifically have those law enforcement officers target certain areas that we have issues with, whether it be speeding, whether it be running signs, whatever the case is. We have a problem. We're going to have to have those people specifically look at those problems and deal with them. And as far as trucks go, that piece of property is outside the city of Buington, and we have an urban growth boundary until 2025. So that will also have to come from the county. We are currently in the works of trying to get some truck parking in some of the bigger pieces of property in Buington. So, and I know that there's an issue on the area of truck parking. So we're currently looking into trying to put property aside for truck parking.
There is a truck problem, and we have to be realistic. Buington's turned into a city that's... People are commuting too from Longport to work here every day. So the hours from 6:30 to 7:30, maybe to 8:00, it gets really congested. And the same thing back in the afternoon from 3:30 to 6:30, maybe 7:00. There are new technologies out there, and we have to be able to work with Caltrans that can put sensors all the way from Gallow Canyon through Buington to regularly those lights. And what they do is they start up their ballot. If they're back up there, they get things to work, they're progressing. If there's nobody trying to make a left turn for three yards and nails, the traffic keeps flowing. You have more sensors, more technology, and it helps traffic flow better. That's something that we have to work with Caltrans and get watching. With these new technologies out there, it's now the time to get after it and to work with us. The big trucks, I know it's been a concern. David Fryer worked on some projects to help alleviate that situation. We also don't want to lose them. There are four here in the valley. And so if those pan out, they'll make things better. What we have to do is just be realistic. We're never going to get rid of cars. And if we can use some new technologies to improve that, we are greater than we do.
Excuse me. Well, traffic in Buington, especially now because I have a 15-year-old daughter, and she's going to be driving soon, so they're really a concern for me lately and most residents. And I think it is important to continue to conduct traffic studies so that we can understand the impact it has on our community, which we all know the traffic is a problem. Synchronizing the lights is one thing. I give most residents to say, for sure, we should look at doing. There's always going to be a peak time and a low time in our city, and we need to look at that in a planning and for our parking. The big trucks park all over, and that's just the way Buington is. And I think that's something that needs to be looked at through all the traffic studies. And then financially, because we need to do the upkeep and the maintenance of our roads, so it's something that our community needs to evolve in over time.
I think part of the problem with the traffic, specifically on the 246 going into Buington, is that it takes so long for people to be able to turn off of the 246 into the various markets. And then when they turn into those various markets, up until very recently, there was no way to get from where Burger King and the chiropractic and everything was to Albertson's without turning back, going back on 246, adding that to the congestion, and then getting back in. So we need to look at ways to make travel on the sides fluid so that you can go from one little shopping center, such as like Redon Time Is, to Albertson's, make more throughways that way so that we don't have to keep giving that under the 246 to get to these other places. So both sides, we need to look and make sure that we're using our space in those ways efficiently. Another way I definitely support is what Ed brought up, the timing and the sensors. I have a lot to learn about infrastructure in cities and traffic, and that's just a great idea. I've been so resistant. I thought that all traffic guys already have that. So if we can add more sensors and it will alleviate the way the traffic slows and help ease the burden, I would totally support that. As for the trucks, I again have a lot to learn about zoning and what we can and can't use property-wise. But what comes to mind to me is that there's property line options and space line options that we may be able to utilize and also space next to the Chumash Employee Resource Center that we may be able to utilize in a way that would still keep the truckers close to the businesses that they're frequenting and find a place with a more proper place for them.
I think the Caltrans probably already has all the high-tech stuff in their arsenal, what they can do just by letting them know what we'd like to see. I think you can see some of the timing of the lights. And I think they're probably doing pretty good at what they're doing. They're just getting overlooked at certain times. And we would work with them. I think we've already been asking them for a while, and hopefully they'll get things figured out. And I don't like to stop another stop in town coming in from Salt Lake. I wouldn't like that. I went from the other side of town, and a lot of times I just take Second Street, take it slow, and I won't even go on 246 on an active. And most people live on that side of town. And everybody's just got to take it slow and easy. And I think there should have been a road out of Thumbelina. I was telling somebody that Thumbelina Road could have gone into Marriott and it could have been something that was made local, maybe by diverting traffic. So they had to do a loop-de-loop before they got there. But that's the traffic of Thumbelina. Would it lead Thumbelina by the way to Marriott? If they were given the option, they're going north or south. Anybody going on the freeway for Thumbelina would have never gone on Highway 246. That would have gone in. And I know that the residents don't like that, and they wouldn't like people taking the shortcut. But I think we could have cut that, you know, made a jigsaw there so no one would want to take a shortcut that everybody there could have looked at the track off 246 there. The... I feel there's a need and an ability to create a parking district in our median areas. A parking district with joint use, that being the places that when they want to have overflow. But one of the other problems with the traffic that comes to mind, if you haven't experienced it, get yourself some insurance and try it. Pull in front of the Visitors Bureau and try to back out when the traffic's coming on 101. It's a horrible design. We're fortunate no one has been killed. We're liable if someone does get killed. It's a bad design. We need to return the avenue to two lanes of traffic in each direction on both sides. There's ample room for the biking program. We do not have people using the biking program for all the real estate that we've dedicated to. I've sat out there many hours. Some days, nobody comes by. Walkers come and bike in. That's a problem. So I feel that we need to get serious about establishing a parking district. We've talked about it. It's property that we own. There's no investment for it. We need to step up, make the commitment to have a district, and establish joint use with the developers if they want to come along and utilize a meaningful project that will work with the specific plan that we've set up. Thank you.
Okay. Question three, we answered first by David. Angcon from Water and Wastewater Treatment Journeys is supposed to cover the expenses for the services in the City of Buington's Enterprise Funds. For the last five years, water and wastewater treatment expenses have significantly exceeded Angcon. Question: As a council member, what would you propose to ensure current and future wastewater systems are maintained or are fully functioning these services?
Well, this is a contentious issue. A little history for people that have not come to our council meetings or just don't know, don't want to know. For a great many years, the water rates in sewer basins in city buildings were never increased by the city council. This went on for years and years and years. So basically, mostly the wastewater fund was bleeding with that. The reserve funds for that kept getting depleted, 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 depleted. So we had a study done, there's two big studies, if you guys want to read these. It's got a lot of technical terms in it. Issues that had to do with the reason that current city council had to raise the rate. And not to get too technical on everybody, but the water fund from 2005 until 2015 basically was operating at a rent by thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars. The sewer fund additionally also is operating at a rent from the same year, 2005, and it is still operating at a rent. However, because of the current increases, we have been able to mitigate a lot of those expenses that we were bleeding on in our reserve funds. Now, reserve funds, what those are is, those are the funds that we have set aside so if we have some kind of a cash drop event, failure of our sewer treatment plant, whatever, that we have to use those funds to maintain that sewer system, the water system, or whatever. Now, we cannot prop that up with general funds. We can't just say, oh, this side from some general funds, we're going to put it in here. No, we can't do that. We're going to put it in here. No, we can't do that. So we had to raise the water rates. Now, we did it based on this study. We did the best that we could, you know, kept it as possible as possible. However, we're working in the right direction to reverse this trend so we don't have some issues of being out of our funds at the end of the day. Thank you.
This was one of the first issues that came upon me when I was appointed to the council within the first week. So I was likely to be appointed to one of the committees to further investigate this. And we talked to commercial, residential, and industrial users to explain to them why we were having to do this. For 20 years, previous councils have not done anything to raise water rates. At one time, Yulton had the second lowest water rate of any city in San Diego, California. It's just not staying consistent at this time because of the new rules and regulations that the state and the federal government has for us. Yulton is growing. We have a great water system. We have plenty of water here. But we need to build what we're trying to do. And there's a new law on the books at the state level that tells you that a city cannot subsidize any specific group, whether it's residential, commercial, or retail. You have to treat all of them the same. So that turns a burden on the city to make sure everybody is taken care of fairly. And I think that's what we've done. We've shown that over time, we're going to have to do some major repairs to both the wastewater and the water because we need to hear from the county. And at that time, it might be 10 years from now, 15 years from now. At that time, the residents of Yulton will have to sit down and say, okay, we want to have a long vision to go and prepare bigger projects. At the time, we're making a headway, making improvements. And we have a great staff that keeps working to maintain a situation where we have overwater lines and to keep up with the trends to make sure that we're contractually obligated to the state and federal water policy.
Well, it is important with the water, finding right balance. We as a city need to plan for the cost of maintenance because our city's growing. And so it's going to add more stress to the sewer plants and the water plants. And so I think we just need to find the smart planning and how much more our city can handle with our water and our sewer. And so the rates are constantly absolutely going to have to affect that. And that's how, you know, everything goes up. Water rates go up to handle the maintenance. And so there's lots to be done there. But as you said, we're doing well with water and keep going, keep the way it is.
This is a topic that is near and dear to me. In my position as Mrs. Manager of the San Diego High School, we have dealt with a major catabon almost specifically for things like utilities and aging water. And through our studies, we found that just having aging pipes, we are leaking water and by leaking water, raising our costs exponentially. So my viewpoint is that we need to look for ways internally that we can save money, save costs to consumers. And sometimes investments on automation, new pipes, while they seem costly upfront, in the long run, they're saving the entire community. So those are the types of things that I'd like to look at. I'd like to review efficiency of operations. See if it's more efficient to have in-house people do it or to perhaps contract services out. Are our facilities up to date? Do we need to put in new piping? All of these things add up. If you're leaking hundreds of thousands of gallons of water, the money comes from somewhere. And citizens are going to bear the cost of these types of increases. So we should be looking at efficiency. We should be looking at automization. Did I say that right? So we should be looking at these things. And investment in future savings is worth the upfront cost. So increases to the community are inevitable. But I think that they can be mitigated through efficiency and optimization and just making sure that we keep our facilities up to date so that we are not inherently wasting and costing the city out of all of our power.
I'm in charge of the wastewater in the whole town. And I want everybody to know that none of your water is wasted. A hundred percent of your water goes back in the ground. So I would propose that we would get credit for the water that goes back to the ground because it's just going back into the groundwater. And people think you're wasting water when you use the sewer system. But it's not being wasted. It's just being used. And we have a water well behind the post office that's pumping out 1,000 gallons a minute all day long. And it could put out more. We have access to enough for our water. That's not the river. That's all our water. And it wouldn't impact anybody if we got a little more water. Just take a little people well and a little fatter pipe and we could have all the water we could use. We just have to work on getting our rights to use it. It's our water. We should be able to use it and enjoy it because we're putting it all back.
Water in Yulton has been sufficient. It's tough to work with the quality of the water. We have modernized our systems to be able to recycle and purify the water. I think we have a softer product than we used to have many years. As a councilman, would you propose to ensure current, what would you propose to ensure future wastewater system are maintained fully? The main issue is deferred maintenance. That has been lacking, that had been lacking. It is an expense. We have our current Public Works Director. Came on board and I visited with her and I said, everything doesn't need to be fixed right now. We need to be able to absorb the expenses. And that should be, that's her responsibility. She has a timeline. I don't think it's going to be available to everybody because things continue to change. We have issues with the production of water and the economy come along. We're really standing, subject to a lot of criticism, like bringing the water rates where they need to be. They're still not where they need to be, but they are moving in the direction. The main issue is going to be identifying deferred maintenance so that you as the citizens can know why we're making these tremendous expenditures. But the system is working and it's very viable. And we're not adding new customers to the system. All we're doing is fine-tuning the one we have and updating many of the outdated mechanisms that we've been using. Thank you.
I totally agree. We need to cover the costs of water. And we need to have actually reserves so that we can upgrade our system as we need to. And we obviously have to keep up because I totally agree, if a dollar spent today, we save $10 in the future. However, the system we have now is based on the size of your water meter, not how much water you use. There's 1,800 water meters in the city. And 150 of those are commercial businesses. But those 150 pay 46% of the total cost of water. And that's because we're charging the meters, not water usage. And we need to get back to charging for how much water you use. For example, I have a one-inch meter at my house. And the fee for that meter went up from $26 to $96. Now, that's not using any water. That's just the meter fee. Then I pay for the water I use. Businesses, if you have a six-inch meter, it goes from $190 in the past to $2,512 just for the meter charge. That's not using any water. So we're really disadvantaging our businesses by the way we've rated the water. And we need to get a system where you pay a fee for your meter. Obviously, there needs to be administrative fee. But it needs to be much more equitable. And the way to charge the water is how much you use. Maybe we charge high users tiered rate, like they do your electricity or something. But it's absolutely ludicrous to charge for the meter and not the water that you're using. And so I really hope we take a look at this and we figure out a way that we can cover our costs, but in a very fair way. Right now, it's not fair.
Question four will be answered first by our partner. Yulton has benefited financially from the transient occupancy tax, TOT, collected from tourists staying at hotels and RV bars. Over the last five years, a total of almost $10 million. TOT is expected to increase considerably with the addition of new hotels. Question, how best can TOT revenue be used to benefit the quality of life in our city? How much should the city allocate to promoting new?
I think we look at our TOT and this is where strategic planning comes in. You, at budget time, I mean, the city councilman, I want you guys to be part of that. Maybe your budget crisis, your budget cycle. So you have to look at things a little bit. There's many, best you do it for the full year. But we need to do strategic planning. This is what the city needs. These are our needs. And the way to get through there is by pulling some of those TOT funds and putting it into reserves. We know we have contractual obligations with pension funds, payroll, other things like that. Those are the first things that we take care of. After that, you go on to your bigger ones. You take that money, make a decision and say, at two years, three years, we've got to go. This is what we'd like to expand on, whether it's new sidewalks, whatever, whatever market camp that I call strategic planning and then to go forward with it. The Chamber was just, they did a great job, first of all. And our director, Kathy Greiling, has done an outstanding job over time and I believe here. We just increased their allotment to 450 a year. With today's new technologies, things cost more money. If our TOT benefits from all the funds that we put through the Chamber, then we're doing a good job. The reason people come to Yulton is to enjoy the water, the atmosphere, the weather, so forth. But people need to know about it. One, just the last thing, our recent dedication on Andy Flyer, there's a lot of people he didn't go to. But it's the Chamber was, I mean, they said, we should have gone. So Kathy's done an excellent job for that. And she should be commended for that. And I think right now, where they're funded at, it's at a good spot right now.
Well, the TOT is a great source of supplemental income that can be used to elevate our city, to help with the community and its maintenance. There's other cities that are the same size of us that have used the unique TOT to help with the unique experience and quality of life through it. Street life, landscaping, all that can be used for it. It's awesome. It can help elevate the experience of the towns, of the residents, of the visitors. So definitely, I think something that definitely goes to the Chamber. And they've done a good job at telling people what a wonderful place it is.
So I think that we are doing a great job, like Ed moved it to with the Chamber of Yulton Visitor Bureau. And I think that the level of funding is great, right? It's worth that and they can do a lot of that. And I think that the excess TOT revenue should be used to address the extra strain on the community brought in by all the visitors. So the visitors are awesome. They're great. They bring all this TOT revenue. But they also put a strain on water usage at the hotels, on sewer usage at the hotels, on the roads, on the businesses. So part of the TOT revenue should be used to address roads, curbs, roads, potholes, these types of things, sidewalks, landscaping, so that we can maintain the look and feel of the city in addition to promoting it and increasing the options that we have here. In addition, I believe that a strong reserve is extremely important. And any excess revenues after all of the wear and tear and, you know, upkeep is a threat should go towards building a healthy reserve for the city.
I was among the people that didn't think we should raise transient occupancy taxes. I thought it would attract more people to Yulton so they wouldn't be spending 2% more to go to Solvay. But it's an income that we enjoy. And the people that come here are using our roads, our water, our sewer. And I'd like to have, promoting tourism. And with the San Diego Valley promotions, keep the people coming here and taking a place for everybody to come and use that money to keep it pretty and promote more business.
Thank you. I believe that we need to establish infrastructure improvements. You establish them, then you prioritize them with limits and you get performance. Over six years ago, we started trying to get streetlights on Industrial Way. Industrial Way is now almost fully impacted with no streetlights. And then we have businesses that serve alcohol at the end of the road, six-tenths of a mile up there from 246. And they're stumbling along as they head back to their hotels. There's no direct route. It's an accident waiting to happen. And we need to be proactive rather than reactive. Just the streetlights, we brought them to council. Actually, they're just languishing. We wanted streetlights. We only need streetlights. We don't, we've gotten into the decorated lights. We're not that needy in the productivity of the appearance of it. We need productive light systems now, sooner than later, for our citizens and the visitors that come. We have some issues. I'm not aware of any accidents or accosting that we've had. It will happen when the element that goes out and accosts people find out that they could get away with it in Yulton. So I would like to see us establish a certain amount of the TOT to correct that problem because it's more of a front murder item. And to do it, I'm continuing to talk about it.
Well, as pointed out, TOT is actually to make up for the services that visitors use, water, police, fire, sewer, libraries, parks, so on and so forth. For every dollar of TOT we get, the lodging has to generate $8.33. So we need to use our TOT money very wisely. The Chamber does do a great job of marketing Yulton. But basically, TOT depends on how many rooms you have, how many hotel rooms there are in the economy. So we need to market. However, we need to realize every dollar we give someone for marketing, they have to bring back $8.33 in order to break even. Our Chamber does a fabulous job and they do much more. and they do much more than market Beulton. They run events for us, economic development. And let me get back to maybe that Economic Development Task Force works with the Chamber and the hotels and the restaurants and so on on how to get more visitors coming to Beulton. But we need to use our T O T for what it's used, what needs to be used for. I totally agree with lighting. We need to backfill some of these services that tourists use for our T O T. Our T O T is very, very precious, and it's very difficult to give someone a dollar and expect them to bring in eight dollars and thirty-three cents. So as far as marketing Beulton, yes, use some T O T. But we need to use our T O T wisely. We need to use it for what it's meant to be. And that is to do our infrastructure, our police, fire, and so on, to make our community whole so that tourists pay their fair share, just like the community is paying its fair share on T O T. And once again, the Chamber does a fabulous job. Beulton's booming. The visitor descending has rallied. It's great, and we need to keep that up. But we need to look at the whole picture, not just Beulton. We need to market the whole area.
So let me start with the second question first. How much does the city allocate to promoting Beulton? That, a few years back, it was tied to a percentage. The money fluctuated, went up and down. The Chamber, the visitor bureau came to us and said, hey, we'd like to have a set budget so we can budget ourselves throughout the year. So we gave them a four hundred thousand dollar allotment. This year, they had a shortfall. We gave a few dollars more. They do a spectacular job of promoting the city of Beulton. Now, T O T money comes from hotels, goes into the general fund. The general fund, we have, every year, we have our budgeting. And I have not seen a lot of you when we are in our budgeting. If you have any problem sleeping at night, you should tell it to us on these meetings because they will put you out. So that T O T money goes directly into the general fund. Now, if you have a budget, just like you have a budget at home, you have to say, okay, I have X amount of dollars. I'm going to pay for this, that, this, and that. Now, my philosophy is, is one, when I do anything with money, I act like it's my money. But it's your money that we are spending. So if your own personal finances at home, if you are barely making a buck a month, you don't go out and buy a new car, right? Because that's dumb. Now, the question here is how we benefit the community of Beulton with this T O T money? So now, we have more hotels coming into the city of Beulton. We're getting more money. As a matter of fact, in seventeen eighteen, we took in about two point eight million dollars of T O T. Four hundred thousand, four hundred fifty thousand went to the visitor's bureau. They have a budget they have to deal with as well. So as this money increases, the things that we really need to do as a benefit for the people that are having this impact on them is we can have more restaurants, wine tasting. We can put concert centers in. We can put biking trails. They go in and out of Beulton, possibly all the way to Solvay. So if we get more money, we're going to take that money and we're going to directly benefit the people of Beulton.
I would like to see Beulton to be more of a valley entertainment recreation center. Bowling alley, mini golf, batting cages, zip line, et cetera. What are we doing to encourage that? Or are we for sale to form an interest? I'd hate to see Beulton become more like the Upland chain stores everywhere and lose its own personality.
Well, I have to agree. I don't want to see Beulton become a whole bunch of chain stores because I've grown up here, and so I watch the change a lot. However, I know some fun things to come in, like the bowling alley would be a big step because I know a lot of residents are excited about that. I've got lots of people talking about sports complex. However, like the car said, I really don't want to see Beulton grow too, too much because I enjoy our small-town atmosphere. So whatever we do bring in, I hope that it can keep our small-town charm, but also be a lot of family-friendly and bring in visitors alike. Something that benefits our whole community. So I'd like to see more than more chain stores or, I know you were talking about, a Walmart or something. But I would hate to see something that got rid of our people.
Everybody here, without the mic, while I talk, I might be loud. I would like to see Beulton to be more of a valley entertainment recreation center. Bowling alley, mini golf, batting cages, zip lines, et cetera. What are we doing to encourage that? Or are we for sale to form an interest? I'd hate to see Beulton become another local chain store complex.
I totally agree with what Robyn said. I don't want to see us just become a long line of chain stores. But I also think that we have to think about what adding all of those different things would bring to Beulton. So, yes, I'm all for community center, family-friendly. I have three point five kids, three point four kids. You know what I meant. Two point five was right the first time. Get late, pass a bad pen. But it should be community-oriented, and it should be family-friendly. And we do need things for families and kids to do. But if you start bringing in all of these things, and batting cages, and mini-golf, and this, you are now bringing people in from not just the valley, but Upland, and San Fran, and San Barbara. And we are already talking about things like traffic and overabundance of people in the town. So we need to be strategically careful about what we bring in and where and how. And I would be maybe more in favor of a multi-use community center so that we could do a number of different things within one building and one location rather than inundating the city with all these different locations that would exacerbate the issues which I've already been discussing this evening.
Well, there's some good news there is as a fight in the town. There's supposedly another office over where the old Mexican restaurant is across from DC banners in two forty-six. That little area there is, the people have the property where the Ostrich Farm is. And I talked to the guy. He may even have a flight from the top of the hill to the Ostrich Farm. You can imagine that. So if that happens, it'd be nice. And I think along the lines of entertainment, there was talk about playing fields outside of town, like the Santa Rosa area, for soccer fields or something like that. There's more areas north of town that are out of town that could serve as some kind of a fields-type thing or event-type thing where everybody could be staying in town. But we'd have to work with the county, of course, because it wouldn't be the next Asian field. But we have, like, the zip line is out of town, but it's going to be, it's not announced to be a little out of town, but keyed in town, much like the wine tasting. It's all over, but it's keyed in town. So we have to have a bit in town that everyone can run around. We have to make it comfortable for the businesses to run their operations out of Beulton, which I think we're kind of doing.
It's a wonderful idea, probably an expensive endeavor, but it won't ever happen unless we get people interested in promoting valley-wide entertainment. Chakira was working solar in an area on Santa Rosa Road. It just couldn't put it together. Maybe the valley is ready for that now. But we need a partnership agreement. Beulton isn't going to be the financial ladder for a valley entertainment center because if we don't have a place for it, we are closely connected to many sites that will lend themselves to be attractive valley entertainment centers. A lot is happening with social media. The word gets out, and people really assume. We do our fair share during mass entertainment. We call it Beulton Bonanza. But the parks have been used for wonderful events. It's been a partnership of clubs or organizations. Beulton has two or three types of facilities. Happy to see the Ostrich Farm. That's an open space area. We're really not, we don't lend ourselves to that. But I think we could participate, and it probably would be a J P I, Joint Powers, J P A, Joint Powers Association, where everybody takes on responsibility. And that would get the ball rolling. Thank you.
I totally agree with the balance between commercial, residential, recreational use. I mean, and that takes good planning. And we're totally capable of good planning. And we're totally capable of cooperating with the county and our neighbor in Solvay to make this sort of thing a win-win situation. I think the San Yves Valley is a destination. You know, anyone's city really isn't, but altogether, we are. We do need to take care of our citizens. I feel that the entire function of a city council is to make sure the quality of life for residents in that city is good. And that means we do need recreation. I grew up here. There was, you know, fortunately, I grew up on farms, I have forests, goats, and all sorts of things. But kids today don't have that. So we need to give that to them. And the bowling alley would be a great start. We have great parks. But we do need a sports complex. But it needs to be a valley-wide one, not just Beulton. I totally agree that it needs to be a cooperative effort. And we need to plan carefully so that Beulton does maintain its small-town rural character. Otherwise, why would the tourists come here? They could go to Kmart or Walmart, anywhere. But, you know, I think a unique Danish village, a unique Beulton, a unique San Yves, Los Lejos. All of that, we need to work together to make this valley a destination and use our money to enhance the quality of life for our citizens, especially our youth.
This is an interesting question. I don't know if you know my background, but I've been on every continent except Antarctica. I have been in all the states except for eight. There's still no button on us. Now, the question came up about corporate America, over America. There's nothing more disheartening than to go to a city three states over here, and it's the same stores as three states ago, and on, and on, and on, throughout the whole country. I have been the biggest proponent of locally-owned businesses. Have you ever had a conversation with me? You'll say that I would far more support a locally-owned business here that people have a stake in this town. They want to stay in this town. It's not just some boardroom in New York getting money from businesses that have a city in Beulton. As far as recreation goes, I've been saying that since I was on City Council ten years ago, that our kids need something to do in this town to keep them out of trouble. You know, they need some kind of recreation. I talked to Carol Beers from ten years ago about this bowling alley. I think the bowling, Sierra was in, I'll be on some of those conversations. It has unfortunately taken ten years for her to get that finally approved. I saw her pictures of it in our planning commission today. It's spectacular. This is going to be a spectacular, wonderful addition to the city of Beulton. So there's a start. So you, it's kind of like, there's always the catalyst, it seems, that if one comes in, you know, others will come in. As far as the zip line goes, yes, that can be utilized by people here, but Stuart Wilder has had nothing but gap stops with that, getting that project in, but he's still working on it. I just talked to him recently about that. So we, and getting back to this T O T money, we have Abilow Flags. This is a golden opportunity for us to put in some type of recreation entertainment on Abilow Flags so that our kids will have things to do and stay out of trouble. I have a lot of kids too.
I went to high school here, so in early seventies, February seventy-six. So at the time, there was not a lot of activity recreational for the kids. I'm a big proponent for the kids. I'm currently, this is my fourteenth year being on board for Laffell. I'm currently five years of president. I barbecue for the football boosters for the last eight years. And I thoroughly believe we need to have more activities here. I've been, sorry, we talked about a recreational more sports complex. My son was an all-star. We traveled everywhere, but Beulton, everybody said, boy, this would be a great place to come. You have something to do for the adults. You have wine of your taste. At the time, Sean Grant said if anything ever came up, he would be willing to put up another two hundred thousand dollars to improve the movie theater. If something comes, you build, it's the trick that I'll have. You have something for the kids, you build them that. More hotels. You promote Beulton and the valley. And you can't help but have positive roles for that.
Okay, the second question from the audience will be answered first by Luis. First, your question, how do you feel about Pejat?
I may be a little biased, I will admit. I am business manager of the San Andres High School. So in terms of whether or not I support education, it's probably number one on my list. But also, a lifelong student, I've been in school since preschool all the way through finishing high school last year. So to me, education in the home and education for my kids is what you do. Supporting education makes for a better community, makes for a better state. The more educated our kids are, the better citizens they become. So to me, education is a non-issue. I fully support Measure A. I fully support our schools. I would just like to make sure that, you know, they use Measure A as a way to get ahead of the budget so that they don't have to come back and revisit this situation. Measure A should be a way to help them get back on track, get where they need to be in this horrible age of state-defending schools. So if Measure A helps them get there, school should be a first priority for all of our kids. So I am fully in support of Measure A.
I support Measure A as well. And I appreciate that you have to cut out the senior citizens. I think it's a good thing that people that already raise their kids don't want to keep spending money on five, and they are looking at it. I think you're doing a good job. I'd love to call that a supportive helping.
My reason for supporting Measure A is that it is definitive. It's ninety-nine dollars, period. You can budget for that. The things that they intend to, they prioritize, one of the main things, restore the music program. Jeff Carter, thirty years ago, the program we raised, the money they needed, we got it up over the top. A couple of the banks got involved, and it was a wonderful program. But as inflation goes and others' school needs, it eroded away. It was discontinue. That was a sad day for Beulton and the valley with regard to the ability of having music programs. You know, we used Abilow Flags to march the Hannah de Bane on Flag Day and the Fourth of July. I think they would love to do that again. Somebody's going to have to just support that. And a ninety-nine-dollar ticket is maybe two meals at a nice restaurant in the valley. So get on board with it. You can push it over. I just don't want to see it going to one ninety-nine and three ninety-nine. But I hope that you succeed in getting it. And as far as how do I feel, I'm voting for it. Thank you. And with the lady, it is. And with the lady, it is.
Measure A is crucial. First of all, the thing that's great about Measure A is all the money stays in Bewleton and goes directly to our children. And for those of you that are mathematicians, which I am not, it's eight dollars and twenty-five cents a month, or twenty-seven point five cents a day. That's a coffee, that's not even a coffee. So, and what are we going to get? We're going to, we already talked about the music program, but also it's going to help children that are performing below their grade level, you know, help these kids stay current. I mean, what happens to a child that by fourth grade isn't reading that grade level? The statistics are astounding how that child's future looks. And so the thing that excites me about Measure A is, number one, how inexpensive it truly is for what you get, but number two, the things it's going to do for our kids in Bewleton. And as for twenty-seven point five cents a day, my gosh, we citizens in Bewleton can pass a sixty-six percent yes bond issue. We just need to measure and we just need to talk it up with our neighbors. Sixty-six percent's a tough sell, but my gosh, if anyone can do it, Bewleton can do it. And if it's not us, who? And if it's not now, when for our kids?
Yeah, I'm also supportive of it, it's a lot. And we recently addressed the city council meeting where some senior sixty-five-year-old, sixty-five-year-old exempted from this anyways. So I think that some people that are on fixed incomes, you know, don't have additional income, they should have exempted from this, I agree with that. I think that we can absorb this. I thought it was very unfortunate that some of the programs, like the music programs and things, had to go out of our schools. And these schools will be the theaters to our high schools. Some of those programs need to be initiated here at the elementary and junior high school level. Because of any of the ones that grabbed these that we had recently, the high school band was out there and they were spectacular. I mean, they were awesome. So in my own opinion, the kids need to start here and go to that high school and then you will have these huge bands at our high school, which now you go out there and sometimes there's more cheerleaders than the band members. And I think that's partially because the programs are not coming from here, the junior high to high school, so you just don't have the people that want to be in the music programs and some of the other programs you want to support for this. So all of you, yes, please vote for this when it comes up about.
I'm also a guest on this. I'm the liaison for Council Number Two, the school district. And I know I have talked about this and other programs, but you look at what it will bring to, not just Bewleton, the Valley. The state, whether it's computerized or other technologies, the music programs is important, sports program, recreation for the kids. It doesn't cost us that much. And the best part, I think, they have an oversight committee, I think, of the citizens of Bewleton. So in the state, we're in this state, part of the strategic plan is to know exactly where every dollar goes for a citizen here in Bewleton.
Well, I'm also a little biased because I do substitute. I have worked in the school here, my kids have gone to school here. So obviously, I'm maybe support of Measure A. I think it's something really important for our students. I've watched a lot of programs be cut, I've watched the class sizes grow, which is difficult for the students to have, you know, twenty-four, twenty-five, thirty kids in a class. My daughter's part of the baby class that was here. So we watched the music department go and programs. And it's been so sad to watch because, like a lot of people, I grew up here, went to Hanukkah and kindergarten for eighth grade. So to see programs that aren't there, but even when I was there, it's really sad. So I'm really excited about Measure A.
Okay, I have a, I believe strongly, and it's right on time, it was scheduled for nine. I was only going to ask two questions from the audience without reasons, but we have one minute, which is, to me, the most important question, to hear the candidates answer, "Why vote for me?" So, but there's one question, I think, that the committee gave, they gave me three, that should be asked and to make that happen, to get us out on time, allow one minute for this question, okay? And I think it's a one-minute type of question. So here it is, John, you'll start, okay? Do you see any possibility of a park on the east side of the freeway, besides the so-called Pocket Park at Vineyard Village?
I've heard that that park is reduced, or getting smaller, the Pocket Park. I don't know where we would put with the Baldy Alley, that's going to be kind of like a park. I don't know whether property we have that's available for our park. Unless we've got the property behind ours, that that will take us to purchase a little property and that maybe could partner with somebody corporate to have a kind of amphitheater, park deal for events, that's.
So, I walk this down, I'm going to stay in this, I'm not aware of where.
Do you question a park on the east side?
Yeah, I'm going to ask that question. Do I see the park on the east side of the one? We do have, and it's called the Pocket Park, and that is better than nothing. But this is how communities get overloaded with obligations. Going in and out of the cock to try to get it done and not having a financial plan. We're going to be, we're going to be lobbying Peter to pay Paul to keep the park going. I'm not aware of any acreage that's within our city. And I imagine you're probably talking about five to ten acres. So I think it's a bad idea to be putting that before us to consider. I will tell you that I wouldn't support that. There isn't a plan, there isn't a budget, and we do have a convention for a Pocket Park. Let's enjoy that and then get some fundraising going. Have a, make a bigger one if you come up with the idea and the plan and vote.
The park that we do have planned on the east side is eight tenths of an acre. And you can do a lot with eight tenths of an acre. I'm for parks and recreation, but it's very, very difficult to know where to put one unless we annex a property, and once again, the budget. So I feel we need to really focus on pedestrian and bike safety so kids on the east side can get to all the parks we have on the west side. And we need crosswalks. You know, something that I just got a hammer on is crosswalks on the Henry Road. And I know the city doesn't want to do that, they say crosswalks empower the pedestrian and some of, but we need to make it safe for our kids and our people to be able to walk to the park or walk around in Bewleton. So pedestrian and bike safety, I think, are crucial. And that would solve some of the problems on the east side of getting our kids and our citizens to the parks on the west side.
Yeah, it's kind of a difficult question because there is limited land on the east side of our city. There is one piece of land that is next to the new hundred-and-fifty-five condominiums, the Crossroads Project. That is scheduled in the future to become, I think, forty-nine, even, senior living. Now, it's not going to happen long. So in the interim, there's a possibility that you can negotiate with the developers that are doing that project, that it doesn't have to be the full-on swings and the whole thing, but you can put some grass down, put some irrigation in, and then when the time comes to build this senior living center, all you're taking out is the grass. So there is a possibility that that happens.
We live on the east side, like I'm a guy, and we live in the double arena, so hopefully we'll be able to enjoy the Pocket Park or work to do development. We'll hope that we can because we have a nineteen-month-old grandson who left a blow and go and someplace to let him play and warm out. They are expensive to maintain and unless you have funds dedicated to that, this is part of strategic planning again, to say that, okay, we want to develop another park on the east side, we have to just look at the long-term maintenance of it and keep it up. That park is going to be developed by the developers in that. And that's part of the incentivize for them to promote that project is for them to be able to build anything that park for us. It's just a tough situation, you're just not much around over there on the side.
I think that's a tough question. However, I think we have such great parks in Bewleton, Oak Park, Review Park. They're still fairly new to our city, even though they've been here for a while, where people have been here for long term. We didn't have a park, so anything was better than nothing. I know I have lots of friends in the Upland area to drive, the short drive to Review Park or right here to Oak Park, it's not so bad. So I don't want to say I'm not in favor of another park, because I love parks. However, I feel our time should be spent with the parks we're in now.
There's a usual saying in school business finance that you can have anything you want, but you can't have everything. And I think that this comes down to prioritizing and proper prioritizing. And we do have parks and we have other things that might be higher on our list of priorities than trying to squeeze a park in where the infrastructure isn't really lending itself to having a park. So rather than wasting dollars to make a park up here, we might prioritize those dollars in a more efficient way, leverage our dollars better.
Perfect, thanks for cooperating. To end the evening, we're giving each candidate one minute to answer the question, "Why vote for me?" and not really what, and where we began. Go right down. Thank you. Why vote for me? I employ marketing and management techniques. Marketing enables and allows us the ability to improve and offer value for those that choose to live in or pass through Bewleton. Management is balancing what assets we have to maintain and establish facilities, events that our city agrees to undertake and support. Simply stated, our quality of life governs our level of motivation. A reality moment, I have a quote from an unknown author, but I've always enjoyed it and I try to exercise it as many times as I can. Every morning, you are handed twenty-four golden hours. They're one of the few things in this world that you get free of charge. If you had all the money in the world, you couldn't buy an extra hour. What will you do with the priceless treasure? Remember, you must use it as it is given only once. Once wasted, you cannot get it back. I am able to work to work consensus, some proposals are viable, but some are not. I ask for your support in continuing to guide the state in the right direction. Thank you.
The reason I should vote for me is I have the experience, administrative experience. I've been an administrator of the private sector, so I've got that experience and I have the time. I retired from UCSB, so I have the time to devote to being a city council member. And I pledge to you my effort to be a good city council member. I'll do my homework and come to be prepared and I'll be available to the public. I'll visit with you, I'll get back to you if you email me. And I love this city. I, my family's here for the fourth generation. I was raised here, my children were raised here, and I will give every single thing I have on your behalf.
That's an interesting question. I have had a lot of training, I can tell you about all this training I've had and whatever else, I've gone to all those League of City things, I've learned a lot of intelligence and politics. The one thing that I do, though, when I sit up on the desk is I study what comes before us. We get something unpackaged, I research it, I call our staff, I'm confused. And then I make a decision for you based on how it's going to affect all of us, whether it's our budget, whether it's taxes, whether it's a new project. I try to see the unforeseen consequences of projects where people want something and they say, "Oh yeah, let's put that in," and then five years down the road, this is a disaster. So I try to foresee the future. I'm not creating, I can't do that really. But looking at things, I want to say that I always make those decisions based on how it's going to affect all of us.
I try to bring common sense to the table. I have no biases, I don't get all the projects with an open mind. To serve all of us here, we're all family in Bewleton. And I'm fortunate enough to have my children raised here and I have my grandchildren who were raised here and we're likely to move back here. We lived in Texas for five years, we loved it, but we had an opportunity to come back here. And Bewleton's a great old town and if you keep on the right prospect, everybody enjoys it. And I think, like I said, I bring common sense, I run large farms, multimillion-dollar operations. And one of my good friends of mine who happened to live in one of the largest cities in the United States, King Ranch, he said, "You need to be a keen observer." And it's okay to say no every now and then, and it's great to say yes. But once you make your observations, do critical thinking, then go forward.
Well, the city of Bewleton means so much to me and I've been a longtime resident here and so I've seen so much change and I want to actively be a part of shaping the future of Bewleton. As most of you know, my father, Bill Albrecht, was the first public prosecutor for the city of Bewleton. So the first time I ever voted was when Bewleton became a city. So it's always made Bewleton become a special place in my heart. And I feel like being part of the city council, I can be a voice for the families of Bewleton and make decisions that I would want my family to do and other families here. I want everybody to feel when they enter Bewleton that we have pride in our city and I think that's the number one thing I can say is the pride that we have for our city.
Sorry, I got sidetracked, I was super cute with her running in behind you guys. I know, you're just too cute, you can't go. First and foremost, I bring energy, I'm excited, I want to learn or I know that there's a lot that I have to learn, but I'm excited and hungry to learn. I also bring a unique perspective, I have a law degree, I have a business certificate. I work with budgets every single day, I understand public finance and revenue and how it all fits in, I understand the Brown Act. So I bring both experience, energy, and understanding. I can read law, I can interpret statutes, so I just think it gives me a better foundation to sit and explore issues with that background, with that education and with that experience. So hopefully I can bring a unique perspective and I'll work so hard on the technical aspects and be able to really focus on the issue at hand.
I think I bring practical experience, then I know the infrastructure and everything about the city because I've been working there for thirty-seven, almost thirty-seven years. I'm very pro-business and very pro-recreational and all that. I honor the citizens because the citizens own the city. And you're all part owners of the city, you own the water system, you own the waste water system, you own the parks. And I think that I'll be able to help guide through. And I think that I'll be able to help guide through and have pride in the city, help promote businesses from here.
Well, thank you all, that's a very, I want to, very impressive, and I want to thank all the candidates, not just for participating tonight, but for stepping up and being willing to work on the community. As an educator, I mean, I love the type of civic role and participation that we want for our children, and we want our children happy. A big thank you too, to all the sponsors and volunteers for making tonight possible. And thanks to all of the people here for coming out, for listening, for learning and engaging. To me, the partnership on Splaydine underscores how Buellton and San Ynez Valley understands where, how better we all are when we work together, and why Buellton is such a special community. Everyone here, please join me in giving yourselves a big round of applause.